It sounds like we're ready to go. I am going to call the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council of December 1st, 2022 order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Yep. Was that Diane?
That was Diane.
Diane. I am here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
You have to unmute your thing. You have to unmute your butt. Oops, almost.
Here.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, I got you, Doug.
So it looks like everybody should be muted except for Steve, Diane, and myself right now. Vicki, we lost her again, so we're going to continue on right now. And we'll see if we can get her back in as we move forward with this. We know she's here, but if we can get her on the phone or whatever the case is, so we can hear. Okay? Alright, so we're going to move forward with the Pledge of Allegiance. So those that are in the room here and those at home, please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, folks. That moves us to item four, Correction and/or Approval of the City Council Minutes of November 17, 2020. Do we have a motion of adoption for the City Council Minutes of November 17, 2020?
So moved.
Thank you, Doug. Is there a second? Thank you, Diane. Diane seconded. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Doug Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane Fritsch?
Oh, you're muted, Diane.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt? Doesn't look like she's with us yet.
No, not yet. Okay. Alright, that moves us into item five, Correspondence, and we'll put down the list here. Diane, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I received correspondence regarding the missing Santa in the park. A question that was posed to me is, how do we go about getting Santa back? And I have not had a chance to respond to the person who sent it. And also, I need to talk to staff before I return that communication. But it appears to be that there's some interest to having Santa back in the park. So, that's my correspondence.
Thanks, Diane. Doug, do you have anything?
Received the communication. Received the communication. And took care of it from one of my citizens constituents.
Okay, thank you. I don't see Vicki back yet. Not yet. So, I didn't receive any calls, but I did see the same interest in the in the Santa, and I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about it. The last thing that I heard on Santa is it was considered unrepairable, but that's, that's all I know about it. So guess we'll have to, we'll talk later on this.
Are you speaking, Mike?
Yes, I am.
Oh.
So we're on item six, Questions and Public Comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. There is no public hearing tonight. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not in the agenda. If you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called over, the streets open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when inserting your comments. And fill out the sign-in sheet provided. If you're online and you're going to make a comment, put your information in the text chat section. Is there anybody here that's going to make anything in public comment inside the building? Nope? Okay. Is there anybody online?
There's only one participant online that is in staff for council member, and, and it doesn't look like he's going to make any comment at this point.
Is that Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so if nobody is going to make any comments, we are going to move on to the City Manager's Report. Steve?
I provided the two budgets, the October operations budget and the October capital budget, so that you have that up to date. November 1 will probably be out for your next meeting on the 15th, hopefully. I also provided you the notice of rate change from WPPI. That's a straight carry-through for us, but it, it wasn't really an increase. It was just a kind of shifting of the expenses, so you'll note some went up, some went down. So, but I did want you to note that, that could have some impact in some areas, depending on how you use it, but most people aren't going to notice any change. Santa.
Yes.
When we, if you remember, last January, we talked about when Santa came down, he came down in multiple pieces.
Yep.
And we discussed whether we were going to put, what we were going to do with Santa. We discussed throwing Santa away, which basically the old parts are, have been thrown away. We did leave the post up, and we have all the brackets. So if people were interested in putting a Santa of some form back together, or some other type of device, we could attach it to that and put it back up. And I think that's what, I had kind of referred that person to you, Diane, to say you had worked on that before, you had also been in contact with a couple of groups who might, might have been interested earlier in doing some work on Santa, so I kind of referred her to you. So that's kind of where she's at. But that was, she was looking at getting everybody together to see if they could get something that would, that would be able to put a Santa together so that we could get it back on the frame and, and hang it in the future.
Well, and I'm, my personal, and this is just me talking, is I don't think we should limit ourselves to a Santa. Maybe we want to do a snowman, or maybe we want to do something. I think we should brainstorm on it. And isn't there a money issue with that?
Well, it's, I don't think that the city was looking at doing it. I think that we were saying that if, if organizations in the city would kind of put a Santa together, we could get it on the frame and, and hang it again like it, which is probably what happened last time. I don't, I don't imagine that we constructed that Santa. It was probably built and given to us under some some project. And so I anticipate that, that that would be what was occurring here, was is that a group of organizations could be pulled together and, and construct Santa that we could put on the brackets. It's kind of what happened in 2014. If you remember, you were kind of involved in getting the, the artist to repaint it, and and I think the wood shop did some repairs to them. And then we, we bolted him to that new frame, so.
Well, I think it's something I, I'd like to hear from the people that sent me the email first, and, and I personally, as I just said, think we need to brainstorm, because I, I have gotten criticisms of the past Santa. There were people who did not like him. And were very happy to see that he wasn't there this year. So, I think we need to start from, I mean, the pole is there. The pole was the most expensive part of the project. And, and so forth. So, I don't know, who, who on staff should we be working with, Steve?
I think initially, to start with, it would be me, and then we'll try and figure out where we go from there. Once we've got a framework set up of what we're going to get, then, then I can pass it on probably to James.
That's what I was wondering, because he was a major person.
Vicki, could you use your microphone? I think we're getting feedback from you.
Yeah, loud.
Thank you, ma'am. So here's something just to think about. While, while it's nice to put the Santa or something up there, we really have to think about, do we use city taxpayer money and time to build a denominational character with all the different denominations we have inside of our community? Is it right to spend it on one denomination and not represent everything? So it's just something to think about.
Well, what do you see Santa representing?
Christians.
Oh, I never think of them that way. Anyway, I think of them as secular.
Yeah, and, yeah.
But anyway, what, that's why I said, maybe we want to do something different. Like I said, maybe a happy snowman, or, or maybe, I just, you know, I think we should start from point zero and and see what we come, might be better idea. What about Rudolph that's standing on his hind legs?
Sure.
You know, I'm just saying, there are other things that could be put up there that would be pretty. But, but you're never going to please everybody all the time either.
No, no. But just being a good steward of the taxpayers' money, some people wouldn't like it if we took one denomination, denominational character over another. Then we'd end up with 16 of them around the park and 16 new poles. So we just have to watch the slope that we're going down. But I, I agree, it's nice to have something up there. I, I just don't know what it's going to be, and whether or not it should be something like Steve said, it's something that is donated to us from the community, and that might be a better a better route to go.
I think that's kind of what happened the last time, I know. The major thing that the city paid for was that pole. And we had to meet the criteria of the insurance company. And the insurance company said we had to have a pole that was strong enough for some very high winds. And that's how we ended up with that gigantic metal pole there.
And it was actually a little bit more broad than that. The pole is designed to withstand 40 a mile an hour winds, which are considered gusts that would, that would likely damage something that wasn't constructed properly. And then all Santa was constructed out of was plywood. And so we built a steel frame behind them too. So there was maybe not as much money as the post, but there was a substantial amount of steel design to add structural support to Santa, so.
Now that part the city did.
That part, both those parts the city did.
Yes.
Santa had been with the city since, I think, 1960.
But we had to basically rebuild Santa, because the old one was in pretty unusable shape. It was over in the old Public Works Building. And it was a piece of junk, so. But we re, we re resurrected him, is what we did. Anyway, how about if I, you know, get in touch with the people who talk to me on my email? And we'll see what their thoughts are and bring it back to you, Steve, huh?
Sounds good.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki. Anything else, Steve?
No.
Okay. That moves us on to item eight, Acceptance of the Minutes from the Parks Board of September 16, 2020, and the Plan Commission of October 27, 2020, and they'll go on record as written. That moves us into number nine, Council Business, and we have been asked to ask for a motion to move item H to the, to the top of the list, because our city planner has some prior engagements that would preclude him from staying the whole time, and I think it's really important for us to hear from him on this issue. So if there is a, I would entertain a motion to move item H, Ordinance 1220, to the top of the list.
So moved.
Thank you, Vicki. Thank you, Doug, for the second. Could I get a roll call vote, please? Heather?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Thank you very much. That moves us on to Ordinance 1220, which is a proposed amendment to the Zoning Ordinance Section 660-63, Special Purpose and Overlay Zoning Districts. Since this is the first reading, I'm going to ask Heather to read the whole thing. If I can find it here. There we go. Yes, Heather, please, please read that whole thing for us for the first reading.
Ordinance 1220, Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance 660-63, Special Purpose and Overlay Zoning Districts, Planned Development District and Permitted Location, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section 1, City of Lake Mills Ordinance 660-63, Special Purpose and Overlay Zoning Districts, A Planned Development District, 2, Permitted Location, is hereby amended as follows. 660-63, Special Purpose and Overlay Zoning Districts, A, Planned Development District. 1, Approval. All Planned Development Districts shall comply with the regulations outlined in 66206, Planned Development District Procedures. 2, Permitted Location. A PDD may be established for any parcel or tract of land in accordance with the approval process established in 66206. PDDs shall be permitted with the approval of a PDD Overlay Zoning District specific to the approved PDD within any one or more standard zoning districts identified in 660-52. Section 2, Adoption of this Ordinance Amendment, has been sponsored by City Council Representative Mike Foster. Section 3, The Plan Commission Recommended Adoption of Ordinance 1220 During Its Regular Meeting, Held on November 24, 2020. Section 4, All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances Inconsistent With or Contravening the Provisions of this Ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, This Ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Thank you. Let's move over to Dustin Wolf, our city planner, for his input on this, on why we are doing this, or why we're asking for this change. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Foster. As you can see by the ordinance that's proposed, what we are asking to do is merely remove the minimum acreage size for use of a Planned Development District from the code. All of the other provisions of the Planned Development District would remain in place, so all of the public hearing requirements, the review, plan submittals, engineering plans, submittals, and documentation would still be required. I think when we rewrote the zoning code a number of years ago, we were a bit myopic when we put together the Planned Development District regulations specifying five acres. There are very few five-acre sites kind of in the, in the community. There are, as we grow, some that, that appear. But the Planned Development District is really intended to focus on a specific project in relation to kind of its surroundings. We are going to be finding that in redevelopment of the downtown and redevelopment of the area on Sandy Beach Road and Main Street, that the need to use Planned Development District become paramount. The ability to have some latitude on specific zoning requirements, could be setbacks, could be green space, could be parking requirements, could be height, again, a variety of situations, where the Planned Development District will be important in developing key redevelopment sites. The Planned Development District is intended to be used in situations where by providing some latitude on, on some of those bulk requirements, we would get better design, we would get a better project for the public. The developer still needs to show to the city that it's meeting the threshold for use of the Planned Development District, meaning it is in the best interest of the city, not merely a developer, to use the Planned Development District. That again, there is a higher threshold that is being met, and that would be scrutinized by the Plan Commission and ultimately the council prior to, to any development occurring there. And I think that's the key component. The Plan Commission and the council would still be evaluating these developments in their entirety. But the removal of the five-acre minimum means we can use them on some of the key sites that we have sought redevelopment of. The downtown Century site is only two acres, and that's going to be important one to evaluate when we want to have mixed uses on it. The same is going to be true down, as I mentioned, along Sandy Beach and Main Street. I know Attorney Drescher is on as well, and he drafted the ordinance. He may have some thoughts to contribute as well. And of course, I can answer any questions.
Thanks, Dustin. I'll just interject for one moment. I think that was a really good kind of introduction to what, what the amendment is. It merely removes a minimum site size requirement that's currently written in the zoning code. The process remains the same, and in my opinion, that's the, the most crucial part. This isn't just a pass-through accommodation that's granted to anyone that applies. There is a pretty stringent process to actually receiving the PDD overlay on a site, and there's good review, interaction with the, with the staff, and then proceeding on to with Plan Commission and City Council approval for the, the project and the PDD overlay as a whole, the application itself. So it's, it's a difficult spot. I, I understand why the minimum size requirement was included in the zoning code. It's definitely prudent. I've had other, I've done kind of an audit of, of similarly situated communities around the area. It is very common to see a five-acre or two-acre minimum site size requirement. In practice, though, in the city of Lake Mills, there just aren't sites that are available for this application. There would be as the city expands and we annex territory and have new developments in the future. But right now, if you're looking for redevelopment without this amendment, you basically have an instrument, a tool, the PDD overlay, that's basically unusable in the city of Lake Mills. So at the request of Mr. Foster, this, this amendment was drafted, and I'm in support of it. I, I think that it's, the application is going to be incredibly beneficial to both interested developers as well as the city to kind of reap some reward on redevelopment prospect. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steve, do you have anything to add?
I agree with Dan pretty much. I don't know that I would, would be upset if we added, you know, like a half-acre size requirement, but I wouldn't go any bigger than that, just because of the redevelopment area in the downtown is kind of limited by the size. This will really be beneficial to some of those projects that we're going to have. I do have one other thing to add. The there is one individual on tonight, Mr. Malley, who would like us to move to the third reading if we possibly could. So, just to note that. Are you speaking, Mike?
Yep, I am now. Counsel, any comments?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Would this apply? Would the change apply uniformly all over the city or just within the downtown?
This would be uniformly across the city.
Yes, it could be requested for any property within the community.
So in other words, somebody could take and along the lake or within nearby the lake edge could conceivably take and put a taller building on a lake lot.
Well, I would, I would argue that they could request to do it. Now, they would need to meet the thresholds for using a Planned Development District, and I would argue it's unlikely situations like that would meet the public scrutiny and public value threshold that are outlined in the code. But again, someone certainly can request it, just as someone can request to rezone a property to something that, you know, we may not necessarily agree with. There is a, as Attorney Drescher outlined, a very robust process and, and kind of litmus for using the Planned Development District. The hearings would certainly be conducted. The Plan Commission would make recommendation to the council, and ultimately, the council would would be the ultimate decision-maker on whether or not the Planned Development District gets used, so.
Yeah, so it's not a tool that people can just willy-nilly go ahead and use it. It still has a pretty good process that has to be followed. But it does open it up to other areas inside of the city that could possibly make use of this if they passed all the tests.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is Mr. Malley's attendance at the meeting connected with a specific parcel in the city?
It, it probably is, but it's not germane right now to this conversation.
I would, I would say that is probably somewhat germane. He's looking at 1204 South Main Street, the lot that we sold to.
Oh, okay.
But in order to change this, we're not changing this specifically for one person.
No, but at this point in time, that's the one that's on the table.
Yep.
And, and so.
Yeah, now, I guess I've got a question. It's, Steve said, half-acre. I'm, me, I guess I would I think I'd like
So you're
kind of a I kind of like to offer an amendment. I don't know where to put it. Of a minimum, a half-acre.
Yeah, right in the language, right there, the second paragraph.
Paragraph.
PDD may be established for any parcel or tract of land that has a minimum size of whatever, half-acre. We could put half-acre, I guess, couldn't we?
Twenty, 20,000 square feet, I think.
Yeah. And we could do that, so if that's your amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion. And I seconded.
I move.
Twenty-two square feet, was it?
No, 20,000.
Twenty, 20,000 square feet. I, I'm not good on volume, sorry.
Yeah, and that would, that would take a lot of the houses and housing things out of the picture that, that you would question, Doug.
Yep.
There aren't any 20,000 square foot lots on the lake anymore, I don't think.
Yeah.
Unless you're talking about, you know, like Woodland Beach Trailer Park, or, but they were, they already were. Unless you're talking about, you know, like Woodland Beach Trailer Park or, but they were, they already were, within a qualified zone probably.
Okay. Uh, is there any other conversation about that? Vicki, do you have any comment you want to make about that or do we want to call a roll call vote on the amendment? I think she's still there. Yep, she's still there.
Um, I, I concur with the half acre minimum.
Okay. All right, well, with that being said, we have an amendment for ordinance 1220 to amend paragraph two to set a lot minimum size to twenty thousand square feet. Could you call a roll call vote, Heather, please?
Diane Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Doug Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so then with that being said, and we have it at half acre, is there any other conversation we would like to have about this? And would anybody be willing to make a motion to, um, move this past a second reading to the third reading?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to tonight's vote to the third reading.
Is there, thank you Vicki. Is there any other? No? All right, call a roll call vote, please Heather.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Doug Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Diane Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. With that being stated, could you please read the title for the third reading, Heather?
Ordinance 1220, amending city of Lake Mills ordinance 660 dash six three, special purpose and overlay zoning districts. A Plan Development District to permitted location, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
To be as amended?
As amended.
Because we amended it to that smaller?
As amended. Perfect. Okay, with that being said, is there a motion of adoption as amended for this ordinance?
So moved, Diane.
Diane, is there a second? Thank you Doug. Any more conversation? I think this will be a, a good tool for the city council toolbox going forward, so thank you everybody. Heather, please call a roll call vote.
Doug Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Diane Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
All right, that moves us on to item A, discussion decision on amending.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Uh, item A, could you get that, uh, read that motion for us with the, uh, with the, the new fees, Heather?
Motion twenty dash twelve dash one dash one, establishing new fees for certain park acts, parks activities, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, so.
Should she read, should she read the old fee and the new fee?
Yeah, please read the old fee and the new fee for us, Heather.
So the following fees shall govern the use and operation of certain park activities from and after December thirty first, 2020. Sandy Beach boat lift season rental, um, will go from twelve hundred to thirteen hundred. Sandy Beach boat fence parking will go from three seventy-five to four hundred twenty-five. Winter boat lift storage, uh, city resident will go from thirty-five dollars to fifty. Non-city resident will go from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars. And then for the Wallace Park shelter rental, a new line shall be added for teams hosting a tournament or multiple game event. That new rate will be, city resident would be one hundred dollars, uh, non-city resident would be one hundred fifty dollars. All other fees on the city of Lake Mills parks and boat launch fees and charges sheet shall remain unchanged.
Okay, do I have a motion of adoption for motion twenty twelve one one?
Tomo.
Thank you Doug, thank you Diane.
Um, I would just like to comment since, uh, yes, it says in the mo- in the resolution that the, uh, uh, boat lift was, has not been changed since two thousand thirteen. The boat fence parking has not been changed since two thousand eight. The winter boat lift station, the last increase was in two thousand nine. So it's been a long time in coming.
Yep. Yeah, um, I would agree and, uh, I don't have any issues with this. Does anybody else have anything else they want to add? Hearing nothing, uh, let's call a roll call vote, please.
Doug Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Diane Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
May I make one comment before we move on?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we've let this go too long. I think we should revisit it every five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think this, I mean, it's high time and also, um, I think we're, I bet we're still behind others lakes in the area, so, um, I would, I don't know, do we need to do something specific for that to direct uh, our Parks Department to revisit this at least every five years?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we have to do it formally or just informally. I guess we can go to Steve and Dan and find out if we have to do it formally, but yeah, I agree. They should look at it every five years and bring changes to us, or sooner if they feel necessary.
Yeah, and they obviously don't feel necessary because they didn't, but, uh, I think five years, I think we should look at it every five years. That doesn't mean we have to increase it every five years, but.
That, that is, that is actually the point, Diane, they do look at it every year, they just haven't made a recommendation to change it for five years. So you'll, you'll notice that we'll give fee recommendations from them generally almost every year, but it's not all of them. So these have, these have been on.
Oh, okay, then I, I, I stand corrected, I didn't understand that, thank you.
Okay, thanks Steve.
Yep.
Okay, item B, discussion decision on awarding the twenty twenty-one grave open and close contract. Good, could I get you to read that, uh, for us, Heather, the title?
Motion twenty dash twelve dash one dash two, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Meitner's Land Service LLC.
I will entertain a motion of adoption for motion twenty dash twelve dash one dash two.
I move motion twenty dash twelve dash one dash two.
Thank you Doug, is there a second? I will second it. Uh, so we have a motion that's moved and seconded and what we're looking at here is a fee change for opening and closing graves, uh, to go from five thirty-five to five fifty. Uh, cremation, opening and closing to go from two hundred and eighty to two ninety. Additional Saturday charges for opening and closing goes from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five. And additional charge of a hundred dollars for cemetery services after, uh, three PM. Is there any discussion from any of the council members on this? What are your thoughts?
Seems reasonable to me.
Okay, now is this, um, after three PM new? I don't.
Uh, Greg McFarland, do you want to comment on that? You'd have to turn your mic on, Greg.
Sorry about that, I'm working without a mouse. Uh, yes, that is true, it is new.
So, how many, well, I know you probably don't have the answer off the top of your head. Just let's say in this last year, how many of them have happened after three PM? Do you have a, like a, a guess?
Actually, I keep track of that data, out of forty-one funerals, uh, the past twelve months, nine of them have been after three PM. Of that nine, four of them have been on a weekend after three PM.
Okay, so they hit both, both fees, both of the extra fees, or they will this next upcoming year, they'll hit those. Do they mention why they wanted that added in here?
They did. In fact, some factors include, of course, the changes, um, no longer are services held in churches or synagogues or wherever. They now moved to the cemetery, so a usual fifteen minute interment ceremony is now upwards of an hour. And now in daylight savings, at three PM, trying to close a grave is very difficult, especially in the winter.
Yeah. Okay. That's all the questions I had, does anybody else have anything?
I just want to comment that, uh, that we do let them know upfront about the additional cost, right?
That is correct, I work very closely with all the funeral directors, uh, in our area, so everything's upfront usually the day after notification.
So the families know that there's an added cost, it must be important to them to do it later, later.
That is correct, they are informed.
Thanks Diane. All right, unless anybody else has any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask Heather to call the roll call vote, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Diane Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Doug Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Item C, discussion decision on Sandy Beach boat launch amenities options. Could I get that, uh, that title read for that?
Uh, motion twenty dash twelve dash one dash three, directing the city manager to select Sandy Beach boat launch design options.
Okay, so inside this, there's, there's a bunch of things, um, and if we adopt this as it stands in section three, Steve, will, will that mean you'll be picking stuff in there? Or is this stuff that you want us to look at to fill in tonight? Oh, you're, you're muted, Steve.
Thank you. The Parks Board made a recommendation, um, which pretty much followed along what Rob had asked them to do. Obviously, when I talked to you about this, you asked to send it to the Parks Board and then come to the council.
Yep.
So if you take just the beginning of it, it's going to do what the Parks Board recommended. The vast majority of it, I, I felt comfortable with. The one item that I knew that, that had been some discussion at the council level before was the AIS, the Aquatic Invasive Species Cleaning process. And, um, so that was kind of one of the items that I felt that we would probably have a lot of conversation on tonight. The docks, I, you know, Rob has had a lot of bad luck with those floating docks, the muskrats and the other varmints like to chew on them and they, then they don't float anymore. They're also harder to get in and out, so he was very much in favor of the wheeled ones, which he's using mainly now on the most of his docks. And so they recommended that, they, um, also, um, let me get back to that. The dock style and the roll-in docks, they recommended, uh, what Rob wanted. Lighting, um, they proposed to use the same type of lighting that was, um, used on South Main Street to kind of give the city a style, a brand. The poles are shorter, so they don't cast light as far. So there tend to be more lights than what we might normally see, but I think that's, that's a benefit. Uh, and the fact that we don't have a lot of light cast off the site into the neighbors' yards to the, to the south. These, these lights are very, you know, the, we're essentially keeping the vast ninety-nine percent of the light on our site. They're also a little bit, they're not the full blue light, they're soft yellow light, so they get to be a little bit more expensive. We could shift to wood poles and, on the higher lights and have fewer of them. We could even really cut down the number of lights anyways, but we wanted to make sure we had lights at the dock, in case people were loading or unloading in the dark. We wanted to make sure that there were lights at the AIS stations and at the vending stations and then a couple to light up the parking lot, so you're generally going to have at, at least eight anyways. So, and, and what, uh, engineers recommended was twelve, so, um, I, I would like to be able to work with the engineers on that and try and keep it in that closer to eight, but if we have to have twelve, that would be okay. The entrance sign, Rob just wants to go with the standard city entrance sign, he would get that separate from any contract. Uh, but they did have a location for it spelled out in the documents, uh, which is right at that front entrance to the, as you enter to the left, as you exit to the right. And that location would be set up for the Lake Mills Park sign. The vending area, they had a little building that they were discussing on how they wanted to have it done. They eventually ended up with a, a steel building that, that was pretty solid, uh, that protected the vending machines. Uh, Rob felt that would, you know, reduce his problems with having to maintain the building. Grass paver products, they recommended the style that we use and, and stranded, that we've done multiple projects, I really like it. It, you hardly notice that they're there unless you're actually walking in the grass. Uh, but it does a good job of supporting any vehicles that are driving across the site. Uh, we don't really want to encourage people to drive across that, but it is available for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, this, this was for that emergency section we had talked about for.
Yeah.
Right.
And so we have that, and then the, the big bone probably was the aquatic invasive species. We currently use just a board with tools and buckets. And Rob really wanted to stay with that because he said, you know, they're easy to replace the tools, it's easy to maintain, there's not a lot of cost in changing it out, you got a, got a couple four by fours and a piece of plywood and a painted sign on it and then some brushes and buckets. Uh, some of the other ones that were included in there range up to like forty thousand dollars and require additional water and electric. And so he didn't recommend that, but I knew that, that we had looked at those and, and had some conversations about how we wanted to have more discussion on that item, so I felt, felt that might be an important item to discuss. Uh, the rest of them, I, I felt relatively comfortable with, with what the Parks Board recommended under Rob's direction. Other than maybe we might cut out a few streetlights.
Okay, so with this motion, is this approving the design that we had had laid out by, um, Strand, right?
Yes. It, it should have been included in the documents, yeah. So this, it, it should have been included in the documents, yeah, and um uh it gives you everything. It's all laid out in that document right there.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that this, if, if uh approved, it approves that design. Obviously knowing that there may, there may be some subtle changes along the way, but it does provide with all the uh water runoff and everything that we have discussed and the new parking area for the boats and and all, all the other stuff. I just wanted to make sure to see if you wanted us to fill in anything on section three, and it doesn't sound like you need us to. Those have been approved or have been recommended by the Parks Board, so. Um before we discuss this, I would entertain a motion of adoption for motion twelve, uh twenty dash twelve dash one dash three.
So we don't need any numbers in there at all for section three? To pass this motion?
You could just say that you um are making it that you recommend what the Parks Board has done for the options. Or you can make a recommendation specific to any one of the options or all of them. So you could say we approve uh one, two, three, four, five, and six as recommended by the Parks Board.
What is your preference Diane? Do you have one?
I.
It's, it's a lot of stuff to look at, I, I realize.
Well, I, I prefer someone else make the motion.
Alright, I will make. I will move motion twenty dash twelve dash one dash three.
And are you going to make the motion?
For the Parks Board.
Okay. Is there a second? Vicky's having problems. It will.
Second.
Thanks, Vicky. I saw you trying to do it. It just kept flicking your mic back on and off, okay. Alright, so we have a, a motion and a second um to approve the the, the design plans and the recommendations from the park board for the items in section three. Does anybody have any discussion on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I noticed that uh they recommended the flow uh roll-in docks and um I noticed that the recommendation was for six, the dock being six feet wide. And I noticed that their uh width was four feet. So my question is um how do they reconcile that?
They just spec it. The company will meet our requirements. There are additional items that they will, that we'll have to spec on there, like where the bumpers go and how many tie-offs there are and those types of things, but generally what we looked at is there are basically two boat launches. They're side by side, one on the left and one on the right, and then the two docks are on the outside. And as you roll your boats down and you're gonna pull your boat off from the dock and then walk it around to the outside, tie it off, and then pull your trailer back out and park, and then come back and get your boat. And so um they wanted to make sure that it was six feet wide so that people could pass by easily while they were doing these operations. And the company was like, yeah, just spec it out. We'll hit the, we'll hit the requirements.
Oh, okay, alright. Has there been any um uh been any investigation as to how rugged um and I have no idea what the wheels how well they work being submerged all summer long?
Uh they're, I believe they're a solid wheel, Doug.
Yeah, that's what it looked like.
And so they, they last a long time. They, they're not really, they're more of a hard plastic. And they're not a rubber filled with air, so they, they last a long time. They, they make those for irrigation systems out west. And those sit in the sun all day long and they normally the old tires took a beating. They don't last long. Those suckers last a long time.
Yeah, they use those out in the desert, out in Yuma, in the dhole, dhole farms. Is there anything else? Any other questions anybody has?
Uh can, how decorative is the aquatic invasive species control device? If we go per recommendation?
The A I S per recommendation would be a four-by-piece of plywood. Have you been down to the fire department boat launch?
Yeah.
They have one.
Something like that.
That would be exactly the same thing.
Okay. Alright, I guess I can look at that.
Alright. I did share the screen if, if you guys want to look at it. Um that's the layout exactly as, as uh we had designed it earlier. A few changes in the way the flow of the stormwater goes, but not substantial. I mean, it's still in the same location. It's got a little jog in it. There's also um we put in some um riprap to help control the flows and slow them down a little bit more so that we have more pollution removal uh before it hits the lake. Um the two A I S stations are located uh along this detention basin just on the inside of the parking lot there. And then the vending machine is over here, so you can see that there's a, a planning here and a planting here. And then there's a fence that runs along this edge, so it's, it's controlled access again to the park, so it's exactly what we had discussed earlier, just, just some minor things that wouldn't, you wouldn't notice if you weren't really looking at them.
Is the vending kiosk, the shelter, is that, and the vending machines, is that designed to be a permanent addition, or is this just kind of temporary until we have a possibly a restaurant later on?
No, this was designed to be a permanent option that's available pretty much all summer long, um even during hours when the restaurant wouldn't be open. Um and it's, it's a pretty rugged
Yeah.
Structure. I was um you can see it here. It's, it's steel and it's, it's um a high-quality um item that, that is used at a lot of state parks.
Vending machines tend to throw off a lot of light at night, and they'll probably be lit twenty-four hours a day. Are they gonna be oriented so that they're shining right directly at the front yards of the neighbors? Or are they gonna be oriented away from there? Like towards the lake more?
We could have that discussion as we talk about it. Um it would depend on how you wanted to do it. You could set them in so that they faced each other on the inside here. Um or you could put them along the backs, so they faced out, then obviously they would be facing towards the properties to the south.
Yeah, that would be my, my preference would be so that the light isn't shining at the neighbors all night long.
That's a good, good thought.
Yeah, so we can we can make it so that we can work around that. We can get that designed. They're pretty much, you, you spec out what you want to see and then they build it for you. I think you can see that in the back pillars here. They have electric outlets on both sides.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming that we aren't close to which way that is facing, so if we really wanted to, we could have the backside facing the parking lot and they just have to walk around it to get the get their snack or soda or whatever the case is, and that way the, the light wouldn't be shining at those houses no matter what.
Yeah, this is actually a vending machine for worms and minnows.
Oh, well, that's a different thing then.
Yeah, that's why.
They're not gonna have a snack out of that.
No, I hope not. Uh, yeah, but it's still the same thing. You, we could turn it around. That's why I was saying they probably wouldn't be lit the same way, but even if they were, we could turn them so that they faced each other on the inside there. Or we could turn it around and face it to the north instead. It's
Okay.
It's not a big deal. You can even, you can even, if you wanted, we can put doors on this and have them open and closed so that you can when you walk up, you slide it over and reach in and get what you need and then close it again. The problem with that is generally people beat those up pretty bad.
Yeah, wear and tear on them. And then if we don't, if we don't maintain them and they get broken all the time, then it's a, a big issue. Okay, anything else, folks?
We are. Go ahead.
I have one concern that in my experience, most of our storms come from the west, and it looks like that would make, if it's faced to the west, we could have the first flying structure in the city uh on a regular basis with some of those winds that come in. So we might want to be careful about how we orient that for that reason as well.
Yeah.
The um, the wind, they're, they're open, they're not solid, but they're also steel Diane. And they're bolted to a concrete platform, so it would take, it would take a lot to remove those.
Okay, good.
The uh, yeah. What, what kind of pavers exactly? I wasn't sure exactly on that for the grassy areas. Are they con- concrete blocks with grass growing in between it or what?
Uh they're not blocks. They're um, they're actually a hard plastic that you've put um let me see if I can find them here.
Yeah, I would equate it to like some of the old runway metal things where the grass grows up through it, but it provides a service, yeah, that's what I would say.
Yeah, they're more like a mesh. They're kind of like cylinders, all in a row.
They're designed for that purpose?
Yep.
Yes, they're specifically designed for that purpose and, and uh we've used them in other places. They work out really nice. You can't even really see them unless you're down there looking for them and, um but they provide a, a real stable product for being able to drive over without having to worry about tearing up the grass.
I think that's a good idea.
I do too.
We did that in the back of our steps.
Yeah, they work really nice. They're, they're a good high-quality product that, that um we've used for several years now, and they they provide a real solid platform for driving heavy vehicles over.
And then allow the water to percolate through.
Yeah, they're, they're almost like not being there. They're, they're mainly just there to support the Yeah.
Okay, um is there anything else? Alright, hearing nothing. Heather, please call the roll call vote please.
Doug Fritsch?
Hi.
Mister Foster?
Hi.
Doug Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. That moves us on to item D, resolution twenty dash forty-five. Could I get you to read that title for me, please?
Resolution twenty dash forty-five, joint powers agreement, county nine-one-one emergency system.
Alright, I will entertain a motion of, of adoption for resolution twenty dash forty-five.
I move adoption resolution twenty dash forty-five.
Thank you, Vicky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Diane. Is there any discussion on this one? We do this every year, don't we? Nothing has changed, just the gears.
The year and the amount of money and the specific projects, but yes, it's, it's something that every year, there are some things that continue over from a project that we were doing that ran into another year and we have to hold, we budgeted it, so we hold that money over until we actually finalize all the project. But it's specific to a project or a piece of equipment or something along that line.
Steve, are you talking about the joint powers?
We, yeah, we're talking about joint powers. I was kind of.
Yeah, I know, joint powers is exactly the same as always.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought. I was trying to figure out what project would that be assigned to? Okay.
No, the, yeah, the joint powers is, is the exact same document year after year.
Yep, okay. Routine, yep, routine work that we have to keep going every single year.
I'll call the question.
Yep, let's call a vote.
Mister Foster?
Hi.
Mister Fritsch?
Hi.
Oops, sorry, that was Doug. My bad. Uh Ms Schmidt?
Hi.
Diane Fritsch?
Hi.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Uh item E, resolution twenty dash forty-six. Can I get that title read, please?
Resolution twenty dash forty-six, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, capital budget.
Perfect. This is the one Steve was talking about. Uh do we, could I get a motion of adoption for resolution twenty dash forty-six?
I move uh resolution twenty dash forty-six.
Thank you Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vicky. Um so Betsy, this is yours. You're on tonight, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
So
Yes.
Let us know what you're, what you're doing here. I'm seeing that we have some money left over that we're still working on stuff for quite a few projects.
Right, right. Um so you have an attachment in your packet that gives a listing of some of the projects and capital items that have not been completed or are anticipated that they won't be completed. Um of course, you know that the Sandy Beach boat launch and parking is not going to be completed, and that's the majority of the funds that we'll need to carry over. Um you know, some of the smaller ones like the composting, um that one isn't quite complete, and there's still uh quite a few dollars left to be spent on that one. The mill pond dredging is a similar. Um, street trees, I know Rob was still, you know, purchasing street trees, but that should be pretty much done for this year, so there's a few dollars left over. Um the fire department computer, they weren't sure that it was going to be uh a complete purchase by the end of the year, so I included that in the list to be sure that we could spend that next year. Um we have a few dollars left in the miscellaneous improvements in the public works and uh Reed Street rebuild. Uh Highway eighty-nine, there could be some um costs coming up next year that, that are associated with this project, even though it's complete. It's a small amount of money left over, but we decided to carry that forward just to make sure we had that available. And uh this, there's some storm sewer, um some municipal building items. So these, this is a list of the capital items that had not been um fully expended as of the point in time when I created this list, so I, I want to emphasize that these dollars are an estimate and that uh whatever is actually left at the end of the year after we have paid all of those bills that are available to us is the only amount that I'm asking to carry forward. So this is an estimate, and I expect some more of these dollars will be expended before the end of the year. So the resolution is just asking permission to carry these funds forward and use them next year to complete the project or whatever we are, because it's in a, in a future year, if they aren't completed next year.
Alright.
There's actually, you know, like composting, we're still working on. The mill pond dredging, we asked for a meeting with the D N R. We've been kind of waiting and they've been, they haven't been Meeting with people regularly unless they absolutely have to, and this is one of those ones that they decided they just didn't wanna meet with us for a while. The miscellaneous public improvements in Highway eighty-nine. Um, if you remember the haul route of Pinnacle, we came to that agreement. Some of that, quite a bit of that money is actually for that project. Uh, we haven't paid that yet because the two companies that are supposed to be billing us haven't agreed to what their split is yet. So that's a argument between pain and dull and, and A-one. Um, but that's, that's still out there, so we're still getting emails back and forth from the Highway eighty-nine engineers. Reed Street, we shifted to this year, so we just moved that money over to their. Actual municipal billing, I think will be spent here in the next thirty days. Actually gonna shift that it wasn't, it's called municipal billing, but it's actually public buildings and then we're gonna. Do some HVAC work in the fire department. And of course, you know about the boat launch.
Doing. Uh, I apologize. Uh, just to add in that miscellaneous streets, as Steve mentioned, Pinnacle. Uh, there are some large contract, contracts from the maintenance work that was done this year. Um, I've been on, actually in contact with the paving contractor even this evening. Um, we're working on the final invoices, so much of that large number of remaining will, will be expensed yet in December. Uh, for the work that was done this past year paving wise. Um, while there probably will be some dollars still to, uh, keep on this list of Betsy's, um, it will not be, as Steve had mentioned, it will not be at that three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Uh, amount that is currently there today.
Yeah, it'll be pennies. The rest of them will be pretty close, but that one will be pennies. We spend that money.
Alright. Uh, anybody else have anything, any questions on this one? Seeing none, let's call the vote, please.
Doug Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Diane Fritsch?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Motion here for year.
Alright, uh, resolution twenty dash forty-seven. Could we, could we get that whole thing read? Uh, I want, want that read with all the different rates in there.
Sure. Resolution twenty dash forty-seven, establishing garbage refuse and recyclable pickup and disposal fees pursuant to section five-five-six dash two-zero of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills may establish the monthly fee for garbage and recycling collection per City of Lake Mills Municipal Code five-five-six dash two-zero. Whereas John's disposal has provided the required rate change notification as specified in the agreement. This notification advised that there will be a rate increase from fourteen dollars and fourteen cents to fifteen dollars and thirty-nine cents per monthly unit in twenty-twenty-one. Whereas the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources will provide a grant to be used to offset a portion of the cost of recycling. Now therefore be it resolved that the charge of fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents per unit per month shall apply to all private residences. Commercial, industrial, institutional, and or agricultural collection points in the City of Lake Mills. Be it further resolved that this charge shall be effective upon publication in the official newspaper as required by the municipal code. And effective January one, twenty-twenty-one, and the council president is hereby authorized to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Could I get a motion of adoption for resolution twenty dash forty-seven? Hopefully I didn't lose people. I did. There, they're coming back slowly.
So, Diane?
Okay. Thank you, Vicky. Uh, so the motion was Diane and the second was Vicky. Um, so the, the actual rate for everybody to include are. Uh, recycling every week will be fourteen seventy-five after all is said and done for each individual household. So it's, it's, it's a very minimal increase of. What, sixty, sixty-some cents?
Uh, no, um, currently they're paying, uh, twelve dollars and sixty-five cents. And they go to the fourteen seventy-five is a two dollar and ten cent increase.
Okay, okay, I get it now.
Per month.
Yeah, so per month, we're adding the extra recycling, so it's two dollars and something.
Yeah, so.
Recycling.
Right, the, the aver- the, you know, the annual increase from what they're currently paying would be twenty-five dollars and twenty cents. Over what their, their current rates are.
We were a little low last year though, weren't we, Betsy?
Yes, we were. Um, we, we were lower than we normally are on these rates. We tried to put it in there for it, us to break even. Um, we take into consideration, you know, start with what we're being billed from John's. We know about what the annual grant is going to be. And then, um, calculate the difference for what the, um, customers are going to be charged on a monthly rate. And so we were a little low on that one. It should have been a little bit higher. I have a question. Is it possible to tell? How much it would be if we had gone through the every week recycling? I. I think so. The way that I read the, the contract is that it was a dollar twenty-five or user more. In order to have that increase in service. Do, do you think that's correct, Steve? Y- your mic is off.
It's pretty much, uh, a straight across. We'd have had this increase without that anyways, because we were, we'd gotten behind last year, so we. We'd had a pretty significant rate increase this year. Uh, so most of the, there's a larger increase than the actual recycling because of the fact that we had gotten so far behind last year.
Okay.
But the big piece to note is it'll be recycling every week now.
Yes.
Yeah, there's an increase into the, the level of service that we're providing.
Right. Okay.
And people don't, people don't have to put out the recycling every week. Uh, they can put it out when they need it, basically.
That's correct, but they're still paying for every week.
So it'd be kinda nice to not have to think which week am I in?
Exactly.
I'm always thinking and, you know, like, okay, is this the out week or is this the not out week? Now you can put it out every, any old week you like, or every week, whatever, so.
Yep. So stressful, my wife would always ask me, is this recycling week? And I'd have to sit there and think. What did we do last week? Okay.
I would always look to see what did the neighbors do?
That's what I did too.
One time we did that and all the neighbors did it wrong. Because we were all watching everybody else.
By the way, the additional recycling is a dollar and a quarter a month.
Yeah, I think that's what Betsy said. Good, okay.
Yeah, it's not a lot, although I'm sure somebody isn't happy, so.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I will have Heather call the roll call vote, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Diane Fritsch?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Foster? And Doug Fritsch?
And Doug Fritsch.
Hi.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Item G, resolution twenty dash forty-eight, establishing fees for operation and use of Rock Lake Cemetery. Okay. Get this one open here. Could I get that? Uh, I guess we'll just read the title on that one.
Resolution twenty dash forty-eight, resolution establishing fees for operation and use of Rock Lake Cemetery, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, I will entertain a motion of adoption for resolution twenty dash forty-eight.
I move a resolution twenty dash forty-eight.
Vicky, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Diane. So who does this fall onto to talk about? I was trying to. Understand exactly what we were, we're discussing here on this one.
Greg, you wanna start?
Yes. Um.
Can everybody else please use their mic so that I can take minutes, please?
Ready? Okay, um, yes, these are increases for the fee services that we use to enforce interment. Um, I compared it against our. Local four cemeteries, um, and we're considerably lower at the moment. Last time we increased the prices was two thousand eighteen. And, um, colleagues at Ford Atkinson, Lake Ripley, Forest Hill, and St. Bernard's. Have changed theirs, uh, pretty much every year, um, and are planning to change this year also.
You're done, Greg?
Yes, I'm done.
Alright, the, uh. The actual. Since, there's a. Resolution, I believe, by the city council done around two thousand and four. That set that the fee was supposed to be raised every year. Lot of this money goes to the long-term maintenance and we did a. Um, calculation to try and figure out. How much money we would need to collect on the remaining grave space to be able to establish a fund that would maintain the cemetery. Uh, in perpetuity. And, uh, so I think we've fallen behind. So this is probably a good, a good idea to. Have the fees increased this year.
So some of this that I see in here, looks like it's incorporating the, the fees from Maitner and it is, am I reading that correct? So some of the stuff I see in here is, is basically updating the information that, that we got from Maitner.
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it right. Does anybody have any questions on this one? Did I ask for a motion on this one yet? Sorry, folks.
Do we have a motion?
I'm drawing a blank. I do, okay, I.
Um, how far are we on this motion? To where we should be if we're paying it up to snuff, you know, where, where it really should be. Are we still behind?
I haven't had an opportunity to check.
If I may, um, yes. Basically. Um, we haven't had a price in ch- increase, um. Of course, like I said, since two thousand eighteen, I don't think anybody really. Reached out to other cemeteries, share practices and pricing and fee schedules, so, um, this is something that should probably be done. At least looked at every year. In my opinion.
Would it be worthwhile to? Table this and have it come back at the next meeting? With the best numbers we really want on there since we didn't do the comparison? Could we do it by then?
I actually have a comparison. You just have the proposed, I believe, um, proposed price, but, um. It's your call. I mean, we're getting close to January and.
But we do have one more meeting this year.
Okay.
I'm just thinking. Or isn't it a big deal?
Uh, you know, I've, I've done exhaustive research on this just because simply I was new to the job, um. It, 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 it's a no-brainer. Diane, um. We've been missing an opportunity here. So, yeah, I think it'd be a thumbs up, I mean.
It, it does sound like you have taken the time and done the research and that's where the numbers came from that you proposed to us. Is that a correct statement?
One hundred percent, yes, sir.
So you have done the research from all the different. Cemeteries that are local around us, and I think that's what Diane was asking for. Am I correct, Diane?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to change the numbers, I'd rather, I'd like to have the numbers. Reflect that we're not going in the hole every year, you know?
Right.
Oh, that's a really good pun there.
Yeah, but I, I, you know, I, I just got it. Yeah, but I, I think that's, I think that's what he's telling us is the numbers that he has inside the recommendation. Are numbers that will keep us from being in the hole. But it's also reflective of the stuff of the other cemeteries around us.
So we're okay, we're good to go.
That's, that's what it sounds like to me.
Am I wrong? Is anybody?
Is it, is it? Is it enough to, uh. Have a, a fund that like, uh, the resolute, the resul- earlier resolution said about creating perpetual care?
We do have an endowment fund currently in place. Um, and that is part of the increase. Uh, the current endowment fund is two hundred and eighty-five dollars. That would increase to three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I would like to ask Steve Wilkie, do you think we should increase it at all?
I'm trying to find my documents on that. It was been quite a while. I remember that was a Wayne Magnuson deal. And, um, I did quite an extensive bit of. Calculations to determine what we would need to generate and, but the. I don't remember if it's been kept up on like it was supposed to be.
Would there be value in tabling it to the next meeting or were we thinking?
I don't think so. I think we can mo- move ahead and just kinda look at it and say, okay, we're gonna, we'll work on catching up in the next couple of years. And just pay more attention to that.
Okay, I, I'm happy with that.
Or could we modi- we could modify it, amend it if we had to?
Yeah, you can do that anytime.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Thanks, Doug. Alright, let's call the roll call vote, please, Heather.
Diane Fritsch?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Doug Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Item ten, recommendations for future agendas. I'm not sure what we have coming up.
We'll have the meeting for, uh, the, on the fifteenth and we'll let, um, we'll probably see the zoning recommendation for twelve oh four.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if we'll have anything else. I think we tried to get everything incorporated into this meeting if we could. Um, there might be a couple of small items that come up, uh, but at this point, I think we captured everything.
What is twelve oh four?
It was a site that we sold on the, on, uh, South Main Street deal.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I got it. I just couldn't, I couldn't go with you where you went, so.
Yeah, like there was a lot that was used by the folks doing the main street, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Well, with that being said, we're gonna move to item eleven and we are now adjourned.